All right, we're back from closed session and I'm gonna call this part of the meeting to order. Just wanna welcome you all to our regular board meeting for September 23rd, 2024. We're gonna start again with Kinsey.
Lee.
Oh, Koo will be joining us shortly.
Mills.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Lyerly.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Gerlach.
Here.
Crossen.
Here.
Okay. Um, and joining us tonight from our InterCity Student Council, we have two people with us. Can you please introduce yourselves?
Good afternoon, my name's Andres Mora, I'm a senior at Preble High School and I'm the Green Bay InterCity Student Council President.
Good morning, my name is Lydia Robinson, I'm a senior at East High School, I'm the secretary and treasurer for InterCity Student Council.
Did you just say good one?
Yeah, that's alright.
Let's not start over.
Yeah. Alright, thank you for joining us, as always feel free to chime in. Would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one day under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, would someone like to read the mission statement? Go ahead, Brian.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. And I'll read the land acknowledgement. "We, the members of the Green Bay area public school district, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the twelve diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nations communities." Alright, next on the agenda is, under public forum, is the InterCity Student Council Report. Go ahead, guys.
Alright, over at John Dewey, they had a cornhole August fundraiser as well. Yeah, they had a cornhole August fundraiser. And then at Preble, marching band is doing well. There has been the first HOSA and DECA meeting this year, and soccer won against Sheboygan South. And then over at Southwest, they had their homecoming dance on Saturday with the homecoming game. Volleyball beat Sheboygan North, NHS and DECA are starting soon, and Student Council is running well.
Over at East High School, this week is homecoming. So we are having the pep rally and the homecoming games and the parade. The cross-country team at East won seven medals in total throughout the whole team and placed second overall at the Green Bay City meet. And then at West, Jordan loved to visit the football team. He's an NFL player. And their spirit week was last week.
I'm sorry, that's everything? Okay, very good, thank you so much. Um, alright. Um, and now we have public forum, is there anyone who wants to speak? Kinsey, have you heard from anybody? No? Anybody? Okay. Then moving on from that, we're going to, we're going to go into updates. So we have, we're studying a couple of new things. Actually, they're old things that are being reinstated after being away for a while. We're gonna have the superintendent's update and board members' updates. We haven't been doing that for a while, but we're bringing them back because it's a good opportunity for people to understand all the work that our superintendent does and our board members, you know, just in the, in the, while they're doing their jobs and undertaking their duties. So, so we're gonna start with the superintendent update, take it away.
Thank you, and I believe Kinsey has a slide deck to pull up for us. Each month I want to present to the board an update on one of our critical priorities, intentional community engagement. So what I'm about to share is a slide deck of events that have happened over the last couple of weeks. Starting with David Johns. Thank you, Kinsey. Let's see if that'll work. Let's start on August 28th, the state superintendent visited Dodie Elementary to celebrate the start of the school year. Even though it was the first week of school, I'm happy to report the classrooms we had visited were already well-established with expectations. Students were engaged and excited in the learning. And special thanks to Principal Natalie Ninhous for hosting that visit. It's hard to do the first week of school, but she and her staff managed it really well. On September 3rd, the second week of school, we were honored to have the Secretary of Education visit Jackson Elementary. On the far right, you probably recognize Gina Cornu Zacharias. This is her first year at Jackson Elementary as principal, so not only did we ask her to run a building for the first time in many, many years, also to entertain a secretary, which was a phenomenal undertaking. She managed to put together a really great event, a pep assembly in the gymnasium, and we were able to visit a couple of classrooms. And I think he was really impressed. We were the first school on his bus tour, and the reason they chose Jackson Elementary was because of the bilingual programs. Plus, they saw in the media the ADA playground, and it captured their attention in DC. Pretty cool. September 6th and the 9th, I had the privilege of subbing at Chapel Elementary School. Chapel is our elementary IB program. Special thanks to Emily McKean, who's the school social worker, Vanessa Cortez, she's the principal's assistant, and Jackie Brostre, she's the IB coordinator. They made my experience magical. That is an amazing school, there's a lot of really good things going on in our IB program. What you're looking at is a picture that the students put together. All students had an opportunity to throw some paint at that, and it glows in the dark, and it runs off of our theme, Together We Are One. Shout out also to the principal over there, Kristen Warden, Chris is an amazing leader. And I think, I don't think, I know, David Johns also substituted, he substituted at Washington last week. So if you get a chance to ask him his experience, please do. On September 10th, Brown County United Way had its ribbon cutting at City East Apartments. This is just down the road from Menoka. You've probably seen it because it's close to East High School. I serve on their Board of Directors, so as a representative of the district, and it was an honor to be a part of this. That is going to house over forty families, so our students and parents are impacted by the great work of Brown County United Way. Robin is doing a great job and her staff over there. If you haven't had a chance to check that out yet, I'm sure she would welcome you popping in so that she could show it off. On September 11th, I represented the district at a fundraiser. I am guessing you never heard of this, the Brown County Gulf Classic. Because I hadn't, and this is at least their 10th year of doing it, and it benefits our students. So we raised seventy-two thousand dollars at this event. It was the most they've raised, and that money goes to our students, Brown County students, who are considered at-risk, and it helps fund their attendance at NWTC. It was, it was a great event, it was really spectacular, and I hope we continue to do that as a district. On September 13th, the president of our education, Eric Van den Huvel, and I co-facilitated our first-ever Green Bay area public school district ambassador academy. This academy brings thirty community members together as a cohort to learn more about our district and to provide us with guidance to continue our forward momentum as a district, make it the best it can be. This month's topic was communication, engagement, and inclusion, and cohort members provided us with some really good feedback in these areas. Ah, you recognize these folks. Should I have asked your permission before showing a picture? On September 14th, Ingrid and I were invited to attend the Mung pre-New Year celebration out at the Brown County Fairgrounds. Rick and Koo were there as well. Ingrid and I chatted with, let's see if it'll come, there it is, chatted with some of our students. Kimberly Moore is to the left of me in this picture, and you might recognize her because she sang in our music video. Beautiful voice, she's a sophomore out at Preble. They couldn't get enough of Ingrid's time, and of course, Ingrid was quizzing them about where do you want to do in the future, and forgot the second question. Our kids were so proud to be there and to represent their heritage. This is Katie Tao, on the right, you might recognize her because she was here recently. Katie is one of our school counselors over at Preble, and she was one of the MCs for the event on Saturday. And then I was invited onto the stage. Part of the Mung culture tradition is to, if you're speaking, and Rick, I don't know if you were part of the conversation when they were talking about this, if you're speaking, your people come with you. So students and staff that were connected and board members that were connected with me came on stage, and it's a sign of support. Did I get that right, Ingrid? And then later that day, over on the UWGB campus, they were hosting Estamos Aqui. This is their second annual event that focuses on celebrating Hispanic heritage. One of our own staff members, Luis Franco Toscano, was one of the organizers of this event. Everywhere I turned, I ran into staff and students and parents, it was a great turnout. They anticipated ten thousand attendees, Ingrid, I don't know if they had a number yet, twelve thousand? Twelve thousand attendees. If you've never been to this event or the Mung pre-New Year, I highly recommend both. These are some of our students. Now, this is different from the Nicolay group that you've probably seen dance before. This group was trained by our own Sandra Gomez. And Sandra is currently serving as our newcomer and refugee school social worker here at District Office. This age group, well, the little, the young boy and girl on the far left are cut off, but it was as young as four years old. Proud public school students. And Sandra stood up on the stage and talked about Green Bay area public school district and encouraged families to support the district. Last Thursday, Kale and I did a final survey of the Dell Marcel Football Stadium over at West High School to make sure it was ready for the homecoming game the next night. I've shared this with many people during the referendum presentations, that you could just feel the pride in the students over there. Actually, at each of our schools that have been renovated because of the referendum, the students recognize the commitment coming from the community, and it matters. Those are our West kids, and they were getting ready for the pep, pep assembly and homecoming the next night, and Andrew's son was in there. For the past month, we've been out in the community in the evenings presenting about the referendum. The board has access to the calendar, those have been going really well. The community's asking very good questions. From my experience in the presentations, by the end of them, questions have been answered, and I feel like the support is there for the November referendum. Here at District Office, we have monthly meetings to build community, to stay informed and to collaborate better, to support our schools. And at each of these meetings, we recognize a staff member for the good work that they're doing. In this particular picture, this was last week's meeting, the facilities engineer of this building, Jeff Benrosen, that's him on the left, he recognized Zach Allen, Zach is on the right, and he's in the technology department at the help desk. And Jeff picked Zach to get the award because of his approach to working, and because he's always smiling and patient and helps de-escalate quickly stressful situations. So that's just one example I wanted to share with the board about how we build community and a sense of belonging and support of our schools here at District Office. And then finally, I want to talk about bathrooms. This is a look at, is that the men's room or the women's? That's the men's room. At Preble High School. Here's a different angle of the women's. This is a great example of InterCity Student Council bringing to District Office a concern two years ago. You guys might remember this from one of the quarterly meetings. We're concerned about safety in the bathrooms, we're concerned that they become congested, a lot of people in there are not going to classes. What can we do to fix this? And so, we did. We worked together and we came up with a solution, how's it going?
I would say at Preble, it's been going really well. At first, students were shocked to see windows in the bathroom, but as the school year like went on, they saw like the benefits of having like those new floor-to-ceiling stalls with the better privacy and how the windows help prevent like students conjugating in the bathrooms that, it just makes people, it makes students feel safer in the bathrooms to have those like fully enclosed stalls and stuff, and overall, I'd say the students do like change better than the old ones.
And when I talked to you, sorry, when I, when I talked to you, you had one concern. What was that?
Yeah, so one of the biggest concerns from students was that they weren't able to tell if the stall was occupied because the door handles didn't actually have like a little indicator on it. So that was one of the biggest concerns that students had. We learned they were only temporary and they're gonna be replaced with new doors that actually do have a indicator that shows if there's a student in there or not.
It's, it's good to have these pictures here because I've fielded a fair number of questions about, well, what do you mean? I hear you can see in the bathrooms. I said, okay, I will check into this, but I will, I will tell you what I'm sure I'm going to find is maybe some kind of window that has some view of a common area and perhaps sinks, and certainly not into stalls that are in use. And so we clearly see here that that's what we, we have, we have walled-off individual closed-door stalls. I suppose theoretically, someone could see an open door, we can see a little bit of an open door an eighth of a way into the stall if the door is left open. But otherwise, yeah, it's a, gives some visibility to the, the common areas in case there would be a problem in there. So with the privacy, obviously, at Preble from these pictures, well protected.
Thank you, and, oh yes, man.
I'm so sorry, but this is a very nice bathroom, but this is not happening enough for students because what my concern with this is that there's no, like underneath, you can't see that there's someone in there. It's like, because somebody has passed out in a bathroom before, and if they're not found, or like if someone has like an overdose or something in the restrooms, and like, nobody knows that they're down there on the floor. I don't know if it doesn't happen enough that that's why, that's not something to be concerned about?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of that happening often, but good point. Okay, so again, I just wanted to stress the importance of the role of the ICSC in bringing forward concerns and us working collaboratively to come up with solutions. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Um, alright, thank you, Vicky. Next is the board. Does anyone want to? Go ahead and go first. Go ahead, Brian.
I had the opportunity, two Thursdays ago, to attend the Southwest game. I volunteered to work in the concession stand because they had a Thursday game, I usually ref on Friday, so I didn't get a chance. And it was versus Pulaski, and it was great to see our students in a non-academic setting and not recognize like board members are seeing it type of thing. And I emailed the athletic director, the activities director at both Pulaski, Pulaski Middle School, and our activities director who covers Southwest, and I think I also, yes, because he covers both Southwest and Lombardi. The behavior by all the students was amazing, and the kids were very polite, there's a lot of please and thank yous from both schools. There was no other than one kid who decided to flip off the, someone of his friends, and I said, I used my middle school teacher voice and said, we don't do that in concession lines, and he kind of got embarrassed and walked away. So it was a high schooler being silly. The behavior was fantastic, and it was great to see just all the students doing that from both schools and interacting. And it was a pretty competitive game, and I improved part of my refereeing technique as well by watching the game. And then I was at NWTC for part of my regular job, meeting with a bunch of teachers from CISA with our consortium. And I bumped into Principal Johnson in the lunchroom, and said, why don't you come up and talk about the NW School of Innovation? And he came up and gave a five-minute spiel to a bunch of educators from other districts of the amazing things that we're doing there and how we have the ability to find success with students and meet them where they're at. And the other teachers were really impressed with it, so got to promote a little bit there, so.
Okay, thank you. Koo, we're in the part about board, board updates, board member updates. If you, let me know if you want to participate, so I'll give you a minute to.
Sure.
Alright.
My apologies, boards, technology kind of failed me today, and I was trying to get back in shape early in the week, and I tore my calf muscle. And so it took me twice as long to get here, so I'm glad I could make it, but, but continue, please.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else? Go ahead, Rick.
Okay, I'm taking this opportunity to update folks. I'm gonna go back as far as my time appointed to the board in April, but just some key things that I have been doing to connect with what's going on in the district, it's in four segments, the district, the students, the teachers, and the community. First with the district. I'm actively involved in the strategic planning with David Johns and, and the host of folks that are working on that. That, for me, is, is one that is key and central to the work that, that the district is doing to move things forward. Trying to learn more about the curriculum and how it's working and functioning since school started, I've been just trying to understand how it's working. I sat in at Chapel Elementary School this morning and was watching how the kids were interacting on the, on their computer, and it was really very exciting stuff. And I'm talking to the teachers to get their firsthand perspective of how things are going, and it's all been, been very positive, to be honest. Continued meetings and visits with the district departments to learn about their functions and, and their perspective of how things are going and where I can help. Been involved in some interviews with school principals, both for the end of last year and then coming in this year. School visits. Since August and September, JDO, MacArthur, Aldo Leopold, Jackson, Red, Menoka Hill, Franklin Middle School, Franklin, I had a chance on nine eleven to do the, the annual ceremonial stair climb. Some of those kids, they had that full breathing apparatus that was bigger than they were, and they were trouncing up and down those stairs, that was very motivating. And then Chapel Elementary School. There's still, there's a couple of schools that I have a particular focus on, just to, to focus on some at-risk kids or perceptions of at-risk expectations. And moving into the, the area of students here, the portrait of a graduate work, I'm actively part of that committee group in the development of that particular part of the strategic objective. Student test scores, I want to learn more about where we are, why we are, and, and areas to close the gaps that do exist. Student attendance is a particular focus of mine. I'm very curious as to why are some students are, have concluded that not being in school is a, is a valid course of action. And I'm trying to understand what is, why that is. And then just expectations, making sure that a child doesn't start out with negative perceived expectations before they even start into, just because of who they are. I'm really keen to, to, to making sure there's an awareness to not start a child out at a deficit that they didn't create. In the area of teachers, again, I've been participating in a lot of informal meetings with teachers, meeting and speaking with teachers during, as part of my school visits, just asking some very interesting questions and getting very honest, direct feedback. What I do notice, there's a lot of dedication and focus, and everyone wants to do the right thing. There are times where I think that there should be more clarity about what the right thing is, but there is not a lack of motivation and dedication and determination on the part of the teachers that I've seen. I did have a meeting in the summer with the GBEA President David Harzwick. I want to have more meetings with him and, and that group to get a better perspective of the union's role and their perspective. As far as community, just seeking clarity both before and after our vote on consolidation and closures to understand. There's a lot of still misinformation and conclusions that need clarification out there. And so that's an ongoing conversation along with talks about the referendum because they're linking the two. I'm meeting with some community advocacy groups, We All Rise, met with Robin Scott. Robin, if you're hearing me, I want to meet with you and your group again. And meetings with prominent Hispanic community leaders and advocacy groups, Gracia Villarreal, Maria Lara, and Amanda Garcia from La Casa Alba. I want to, we're, we're gonna do that meeting, and I met her at the Estamos Aqui. She had a booth set up there, and I had the chance, a chance meeting with her there, so we're gonna follow that up. You mentioned it, and you saw the picture. Thank you, Mr. Lee, for inviting me to the, to the Mung pre-New Year celebration, that was just a magical experience. And it just gave me such a great appreciation of your community, which is our community. And, you know, my dad was a Vietnam vet, so there's, there's some connection there with me and, and those folks there, and just lovely, lovely groups. The Oneida Reads Conference, I did participate in that on August 1st, and still maintaining a very good association with Laura Layton and Warren, who is still my hero, I love her to death. who is still my hero, I love her to death, um, just getting some good perspective from her and, and as a conduit to the, to the Oneida Nation. I accepted an invitation on a group called Achieve Brown County, which is a collaborative organization that seeks action to improve the reading proficiency, um, for kids to third grade. There's been a couple of very good presentations. I've been to two meetings already. And one was presented by, uh, our own Jess Vandenhuevel, our Associate Director of Assessment and Data. And she gave a very good eye-opening presentation to that assembled group and a shout out to Jess. Active participation and discussions and explanations of the upcoming referendum. Here again, there are a lot of misconceptions that, that exist out there. Um, and really our explanation is seeking to give clarity, but there are some people who have drawn some really interesting conclusions that aren't based on facts. So our, I see our role as, as giving the clarifying information where they can make an informed decision. And I have met with literally all of the various political constituency groups. And I'm wording that carefully, to learn and seek common ground, of which there is much common ground in the area of student achievement, teacher appreciation, support and community involvement. And, and I think we have common and we have differences in that space. So, and if we all would focus on that as opposed to where these differences lie, we're gonna get some good things done. That's, that's my report.
Okay, anybody else? Go ahead, cool. Oh. Lynn and then who?
Who just doesn't want to follow that act and I don't blame you. I didn't have nearly as much to report. I will just tell you that I visited King Elementary School for the first time ever. I had never seen that school before. It was just a wonderful experience. I had so many happy, happy children. I've never seen a principal get hugged more than that. Mr. Malcor got hugged. It was just a wonderful experience. And just, uh, late last week, I had the opportunity to go to Lombardi Middle School. I was invited and, um, when I saw the front of the school and when I heard a little bit about the history, I realized the last time I had been in that school was the only time I had ever been in that school. And that was in nineteen sixty-three, the year the school opened. I was a freshman in high school and I was there for a debate tournament. And Green Bay had decided to host the, I don't know, I was from Appleton, so it was, uh, some, um, area debate tournament at their new high school, which was then called Southwest. And of course, now it's Lombardi and I'd never been back since. And to see the Vince Lombardi lives in that school, he is alive. And of course, remember, when I was a freshman in high school, I was watching Vince Lombardi coach the Packers. He, there was no such thing as a Lombardi trophy because he was alive and well and coaching. And he came to my high school and spoke, so it was really very meaningful for me to see that school. And, um, Mr. Minel was a wonderful host. I got to actually sit in on an English Language Arts class and observe and just met a lot of people. It was wonderful. There was some other school thing I was going to mention and I totally forgot what it was now. I don't have notes like my colleague here does, but I will just tell you that, um, another thing I've been spending some time on over the past few weeks is, um, creating a decision matrix that I proposed that we as a board could use to help us make our decision that we're having trouble making about how to go about searching for our new superintendent and when to start and when to finish. And, um, you know, I do this stuff because I'm a nerd. I sent it to Rick and asked him if, you know, does this make any sense? And he said, yes, it does. So I have submitted it to our president. And I've suggested that I could facilitate our decision-making using that matrix if you so desire. And that's my report.
Okay, cool.
Thank you, Laura. One, one of the thing that I promised the residents here in Green Bay, that if I get elected, um, we're gonna solve the issue with proficiencies, uh, with our students here. And, uh, my, my hopes are still high. And I know that we are gonna resolute, we're gonna find a solution, uh, to our issues there. Because my short, uh, uh, career or civic duty to the residents here in Green Bay, I found out that we have so many wonderful things here in the district of Green Bay. And these wonderful programs and, and, uh, offers that we have, it's available for everybody, every students. And one of the things that I try to do as part of the board is to represent a community that exists with us, that many of us exist in here in Green Bay. And as a matter of fact, I will point to the fact that Green Bay is probably one of the most diverse city in the United States. And what I try to do is because the fact that we have so many in here in Green Bay that you can't literally get to all of them at once. So what I try to do is involve, uh, with my community firsthand because I thought that was the easiest to do. And so far, I think that the, the community has served notice and they've been willing to listen to the importance of education and to also the importance of educate our kids, American kids, because Americans' future depends on it. And so the things that I, I, I was able to do in this short period of time is the idea that I tried to reach out to the proper leadership within the community to offer a helping hand and to extend, uh, and ask to see if there's anything that we can do as, as a team, as a school district and as a community. And I thought that within the Mung community here, we're making progress. And, and I, I thought that was good. And those of you out there listening are able to watch this tonight. I promise you that we will slowly making sure that your voice or your voices will be heard. Because I know that in nineteen eighty-seven, when my parents arrived here in the United States in Detroit, without any kind of knowledge of the culture, the American culture, uh, without any prior training, job training, they're a toss into a culture where they have to relearn everything. And then when they left their home country, they left everything behind. And so I understand the struggles. And when, when we first got here, I could see the struggles of my parents, how they tried to adapt. Not only that, individuals like myself has to learn a new culture, a new language. Literally, for me, I only knew three single words, yes, no, and not sure. Uh, and, and I understand that we have communities here. Hey, whether or not you've been here for two years, you've been here for ten, you've been here for thirty, fifty, two hundred years. We are all one big community. And I do understand that even with that in mind, with the struggles, with the new language, new culture, all my parents ever want to do and wish for me was that I become a successful student, that I will have an opportunity to go on to college so that I will have a better life. And I think that that's the voice for every parent here in Green Bay. Not just the minority of sub-community groups, I think it's for everybody here in Green Bay. And I know based on what I have learned from communicating to the sub-communities here, that's what everybody want. And I think that we could do that for them because we have the foundations. We have everything necessary, but it's that gap that we have to gap. Maybe it's just communication, maybe it's engagement, but that's where we're gonna have to find out. And that's what we're gonna do. So I want to thank the boards for giving me this, uh, time and I want to thank everyone for listening. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to? Talk about, okay, um, I'll go then. Um, so a lot of the things in my update are, um, have already been mentioned, actually, uh, the, the, I attended the, um, event at, at, um, Jackson with, uh, Secretary Cardona, which was just a wonderful event. The kids were so great. They sang a song, they were, they, they, there was a lot of participation with the kids. And, um, and it was just, uh, generally just really happy and, um, a very well-planned event. I give, uh, kudos to Lori Blakesley. She, she had a lot to do with the facilitating that, um, that event. I also attended the City East Center ribbon cutting. Boy, was it great to see so many community leaders show up for that event, knowing how, um, how literally effective that, that, that one building is gonna make such an impact. But also how symbolic, I think it is to, to see all, all these entities that came together to, to work on that, knowing that, um, housing is a, a, in our community and a lot of communities across the country. But here in, in Green Bay, we are, there are a lot of people who are working on that. And a lot of them came together for that particular, uh, project, so it was a, it was a really happy event. On September ten, I had a, 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 a very, um, fun and pleasant visit at Elmore, which is one of my schools this year. Vicky and I did a, 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 well, Vicky did it, I was just there, but, um, a presentation for a neighborhood association, uh, King of Arms Neighborhood Association. It was in a private home, which was sort of interesting, um, a smaller group, but they asked really good questions. And I, I got the feeling that they were, um, I don't know, they, they were paying attention to the referendum and, um, but it wasn't just the referendum they wanted to know about. They had other parts of our, our district that they had questions about. And we were able to, to answer those questions. I went to West Homecoming on Friday night, uh, in the new stadium, which isn't entirely finished yet, but will be, uh, shortly. It was packed. Um, the team, Wes' football program is coming on. They are, they are looking amazing and, um, the kids all looked like they were having fun. I had a ton of fun. It was, it was, um, I was able to, uh, be, um, in attendance with, uh, State Superintendent Underly when she, uh, went to D O D I. And, uh, let's see, I, I went to our, our city council meeting last week, uh, Kale. Uh, our COO was there to, um, if, in case, um, anybody had questions regarding this, uh, the cell tower thing at Wes, which has been resolved. It was always gonna be resolved, but it, it just took a little time and, um, and, uh, in the end, uh, everybody worked well together and that's how it ought to be. So, um, I was really happy about that. And, um, that's kind of all I can, there are other things I'm sure, but that's kind of all I could come up with, so. Anybody else want to chime in? Okay, then we're gonna move on. Next on our agenda is legislative update, but I think, Brian, you said that there's nothing this month. Yeah, they're kind of quiet down in Madison right now, so there's not a ton going on. Okay, and then, um, the next is, uh, consent agenda approval. Would someone like to read the motion?
I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now.
Oh, I'm still, hang on. Sorry, go ahead, Lynn.
I just wanted to say again, to remind everyone that part of that consent agenda is gifts. And just don't fail to look at the wonderful, wonderful, um, uh, donations that we've been given.
I, you, thank you for reminding us. I like to read those too. People are very generous. Is she?
Yeah.
Oh, fantastic. Okay. Um, okay. Go ahead, Kinsey.
Online voting is open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, we're moving on to action items. So we're gonna be taking, um, a number of votes here. These are things that have already been, uh, discussed. I know tonight we will have further discussion, at least on a few of them. But they've already, we've already had a, at least one go at them at our last meeting. So, uh, first we're going to, um, the first item is approval of course listings for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Would someone like to read the motion, please?
Remove that the course listings for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as presented be approved.
I'll second that. Okay, um, does anyone have any, uh, questions, any discussion? Go ahead, Brian.
It's just with the topic in general, I think we need to make sure we continue to focus on providing opportunities for all of our students where we can at different schools as well, so how we investigate that. So if a class, for instance, is no longer offered at Southwest, but it's offered at Preble, we can figure out ways for those students to be able to get there. So we can really take advantage of the size of our district and the opportunities. We have a ton of courses more than I'm sure other districts in the area do. And if we can make it so they're not hindered just by the school that they're enrolled in, but get those options. I think we need to keep that as a area of focus, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the job description updates. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that the job descriptions as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay. All right, uh, any questions, any discussion? Go ahead.
I, um, at this point in time, I can't vote in favor of the superintendent job description. My concerns, uh, to be noted are it is out of sequence in its, in where it is in relation to the strategic plan. There should be some accounting in the job description of the strategic direction of the school, of the school district. And it is, um, it's out of sequence in relation to that. The other concern I have is that the, the document as it's written is too general in that it lacks specificity of objectives, uh, particularly key performance indicators, um, that, that the superintendent's role should be held accountable for. And here again, those would come as a result of a deeper dive into the strategic direction of, of the district. So I think it's, it's ahead of itself and, and if we were to approve it, it would, it would just, it would not serve the, the, the purpose of using that document along with the, the, the makings of the strategic plan for any consideration for the role of superintendent and for the future consideration of, uh, the next superintendent.
Anybody else? Go ahead, cool.
Two, two things. Uh, one, uh, I do agree with, uh, Mr. Crosson on that, that the, some of the, whether it's requirement or whether it's whether we are preferred to have some of these, uh, uh, sets of experience or sets of educational level. I, I think it's a little bit watered down and I get the, the idea that we, uh, have to be in compliance with E E O. And, and the idea, uh, here is that we are in compliance. I think it's, it's good. But, but in, in my heart, that if we're gonna to improve our, our student, uh, uh, grades, we're gonna improve this efficiency rate, uh, we must go a step further and be committed to the process and also part of this to make sure that we are compliant with E E O. And I think that this, this job description, uh, uh, needs to be a little bit more focused with our K P I. And the rest of the job description here, I think I agree with, except the superintendent one. Uh, so, uh, I, I, I'm a little So uh, I, I, I'm a little bit reserved uh to approve this unless we take the job description of the superintendent out and approve the other job description. Thank you.
Anybody else? Andrew.
I'm going to move to divide the question um and take the, separate out the superintendent job description from the others.
Second.
Okay, is that um? Go ahead.
I, I think there's um, I think probably the rest of the job descriptions um have little uh discussions, so this will clear up. We can talk about the superintendent job description. Then we can talk about the um, the other ones. Probably there's not much to, more to be said since two weeks ago.
Anybody else want to speak to this motion? Okay, um, but is that just a voice vote? No, we gotta take a vote? Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote on that.
Crosson?
Yes.
Gerlach?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Lyerly?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Okay, so the um, so I'm sorry, does that mean all three of them are going to be taken separate? There's three of them. No, just the other two are separate now from the superintendent? Okay. So let's focus on the superintendent one then.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's probably a good idea. All right. So she, um, let's, uh, do we have to modify the original motion? Go ahead, Lynn.
I move that we approve the job descriptions as uh presented for Site Director, First National, Fortune Nations Program, and uh, I believe the other, the rest of the document, other than the superintendent. Is that okay?
Second.
All right. Okay, um, anybody else? Um, anyone want to speak to that? Brian?
Just wanted, I, I don't necessarily need to see a change in the um activities and athletics director. I think um Andrew had brought up some good points during the meeting about the emphasis with activities as well in the position. And I think just recognizing the roles that the people that hold these positions have, that it's, it's not just athletics on there. It's working with a lot of different groups within the district. When I looked at it, I was questioning a little bit of things on there, but nothing that I would need to see a job change on it. So I don't know if Andrew wants to add anything to that or not, but.
Um, Andrew.
Yeah, having, having um been part of the original time that we uh changed it and just made it activities director with the understanding that athletics was a part of the activities, um, I'm okay with this. I wouldn't have been okay with just um switching it only to um, only to athletics, but I'm, I'm okay with it being athletics slash activities. And even with athletics being first, there, there are more other activities than there are athletics. But usually, you know, there, there's a higher degree of coordination for more trap, more frequent travel, more, more moving parts. And I think whoever's in this position needs to, you know, needs to be able to do both. I think uh also too, I, I appreciate there being um, you know, the, well, I guess I, now I still do need to talk about the or, or related field here, though. I, I don't understand why, why we're still calling out sports management, which is a degree that as most people get a sports management degree would not be a, a fit for this position. I, I guess I don't, I think it leads to confusion when related field, why, why isn't related field good enough? I guess would be my question.
Good evening, everyone. Um, thanks again for the, the dialogue around this. Uh, we did, based on the conversation last time, we did adjust the title back to only read as middle and high school activities director, um, so that it just would stay the same. So when you click the link, I believe that that link does reflect that. I can confirm that I think the group that was working on it, um, they just kind of assumed athletics was inadvertently off of it. And so they put it on thinking that it maybe had been forgotten. And we confirm, no, it's activity structure. So we've, we've recommitted to just keeping that the same.
The red line one, it's.
Oh.
It's still athletics.
Got it. Okay. So the, the revise, I apologize. Uh, the, the active link for the proposal is to be just activities. Um, and also under education, uh, we've listed it as bachelor's degree in education, sports or business management or related field. So it, it encompasses a, a range, but would be potentially, should there be a, an external posting at any point, um, it would attract a range of candidates and it would allow us, it would not limit us in who we were seeking, but it would provide some clarity of, you, you have to have some background in some of these things to, to, for it to make sense for a candidate.
Andrew.
Okay, but do, does it, I mean, what, what people generally learn in a sports management degree or a, or even a business management degree, as those degrees are generally offered, do they apply here? I don't doubt that someone with a sports management degree might be well qualified. Or a business management degree might be well qualified, but I can think of probably other degrees that I would put after education, but before those, probably several that would fit there. So I, but there could be a reason that you're calling out sports and business management that I'm not aware of. But what I, what I know of my limited experience of sports management is it's generally teaching, um, building a, a skill set to be involved in a, a professional sports world. Unless I, I could be mistaken, but you may know more about that, I do?
No, I have no extra context of, I, I, on that one, actually.
All right. Anybody else want to speak to that? Go ahead, Brian.
Are we allowed to amend this at the table here?
The job description?
That's a motion.
There's not even a question. There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I think we have to address the motion that we have. You want to?
It's approval of the four things, so if we be able to, you know, maybe first speak to it.
Okay. But it, but is, what, what amendment are you proposing?
I'd like to amend under specific responsibilities, Activity Director for Communication, where it says acts as liaison between the community youth programs, coaches, booster clubs, WIA, district office personnel. I'd like to add and officials, and then and other school and parent support groups. So it's a personnel, officials, and other school and parent support groups.
I'll second.
This person is actually in charge of the parent groups?
It's not saying it's in charge. It acts as a liaison between it. So um, I think it's a huge part of the job that needs to be mentioned in the job description. I've had the opportunity to work with our activities and athletic directors in the area, and they are, I'd say probably, depending on the time of the year, 10 to 15% of the time, they're making sure everyone's scheduled there. And I think it also just recognizes to groups of people that I'm very close with, that it's a key part of their job, so.
I don't know. Are there any, go ahead, Mike.
I, I'm wondering if the board would, would consider um, so the motion is to accept the job description as presented? And I wonder if, uh, we, I think we've demonstrated good faith in, in taking the dialogue that was offered last time to make some adjustments or bring it back. There's not, uh, I would say there's not necessarily immediate urgency that it has to be voted on tonight. I'd be more than willing to uh take additional feedback and say, go back to the folks that, that do the work and say, these are the things that were brought up and potentially bring it back for October, if that would be possible?
I think there, it sounds like there's enough, um, enough changes or proposed changes that maybe that would be a good way to go. But if we're, if there are further changes, um, we should bring them up now.
Okay.
Um, so that, that we um, we can hopefully get this done in October. So if anyone has any further things about this particular job description, then now is the time to speak up. So Brian, you, have you finished? You finished your, what you? Okay, um, but that's in a motion form, so we have to, to agree. We have to, is there a, a second on that? Okay. So we have to vote on that.
And I believe if, depending, I apologize, I don't, my understanding would be if this one then is not accepted as part of the remaining five here, it would be a separate thing to pull this one off as well.
Could you withdraw your motion and just give feedback and have them bring back a new, a new, um, a new version next month? Would that be more simple? Because other people have things to say. And, and if we could have it all together, um, that might be easier than doing multiple motions on this particular job description. Go ahead, Andrew.
I don't feel the need to make an amendment. I'm, I'm probably prepared to vote yes on this after um, after the amendment passes or doesn't. That's me.
Lynn.
In light of what Brian has to say, uh, and Mike is willing to take it off the table, I would be happy to amend my previous motion that we've already agreed to, to remove two job descriptions from the vote. The superintendent and this one, and come back to this one as Mike has offered to do.
Okay, let's all just stop making motions, okay? We have a motion. I'm saying it would be easier for Mr. Freeze to do his job and to do what, what we're asking him to do with regards to changing what we have. If we, if we just make those proposals and let him come back to us next month. Can we do that?
That's what Lynn's.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
I'll remove my motion.
All right. So.
You don't, you don't have. I'm not going to test, but I don't think this will be how it works, but okay.
All right. So now um, let's put this in. Go ahead, Lynn.
So I amend the motion to remove from consideration tonight both the superintendent job description and the middle and high school activities director. Sure?
I think what you meant to say is that you'd like to table the high school or the middle and high school activity director motion since job description until the next meeting, since it was right voted on before.
Maybe, yeah, we already voted on it too. Yeah, so. Yeah. Um, so.
So I'm making a motion that we table the middle school ac, and high school activities director job description until October.
I will second that motion. Let's take a vote. Kinsey?
Crosson? Gerlach?
Yes.
Becker?
No.
Lyerly?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Okay. So we've removed two from the list. Um.
Thanks, Mike.
I can't even remember now. Did we vote on the, on the remainder yet? Okay. So let's go ahead and take a vote on the, on the, the slate of job descriptions minus those two. Is everyone good with that? Okay.
So moved.
All right. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Kinsey.
Lee?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Lyerly?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Gerlach?
Yes.
Crosson?
Yes.
Okay, so um, let's please, let's start with the one that we were just talking about. Um, the um, oh, that's, I'm sorry. You're right. But as far as offering further, um, we'll have to do, so we become prepared at the next meeting to offer up in, input. So, all right, on this particular one. And um, but we haven't tabled the superintendent one.
Yes, we did.
We did?
We tabled? No, we separated. We tabled two.
No.
We tabled the athletic director's one. The other one, we separated, so we have, we have to wait that one for.
We tabled the activities and athletic director position one. The other one, we separated. We haven't addressed yet with the superintendent one. So the next step would be that we make a motion and then we have the discussion on that part.
We could, um, I believe we could table that one as well. But I, I feel like we should have further discussion. That would be my preference, but I don't want to, that's my, not my call. Go ahead, James.
I move to table the superintendent job description until October working session.
Second.
Speaking to the motion, I would like to see model language, and I think there's preparation. I don't think it'll serve anyone tonight to go through a, a verbal first time pass at, at this. I think uh if Rick has um concerns and can provide model language to address this, to see that before we e, e, enter into general debate.
I agree.
Lynn.
And I would also like to um reiterate what uh Rick said about the need to accomplish our strategic planning before we um finalize the, the job description of the person we expect to lead us in the future. Because I hope through strategic planning, we will clearly identify where we are now and very accurately and very um openly, and then identify where we want to be in X number of years, and then be able to identify the kind of leader that will have to take us there starting tomorrow and moving forward. And I would like the job description to reflect that.
Andrew.
I'll vote yes because, I'll vote yes on the delay because I think um, I, I don't think we would have hashed it out tonight, but when I, I would caution that I, I, I don't know that the, I don't know that the job dis, the posted job description of the superintendent is necessarily the place to get extremely granular about things that we want in the um, in the strategic plan. I mean, yes, it's, it's important. And I think that the strategic plan would drive how the board would evaluate the, the superintendent. But there's um, from what uh, uh, from what was presented to us, that's um, there was a lot in there, but it's, and it was mostly state standards. I do like the idea of, you know, maybe trying to focus on what's the most important ones that we want to highlight. But in the end, a job description should stand the test of time, not maybe very much time. Because yes, it will get changed and amended from, from time to time. But I think, uh, I don't think it's the place where you would put a, a granular percentage benchmark of student achievement in, in a job description. Uh, the, the job description is uh reducing achievement gaps while advancing all students and um, you know, um, you know, equity and um uh hiring a quality staff and these, these kinds of things. So there may still be some division among us as far as what that job description should look like. And uh, and I, I don't know that that will go away in a couple of weeks. I don't think there's much division on what is important in the superintendent, though. That's kind of what I took a long time to, to get around to. We might have a difference of opinion on what we think a job description should look like, but I think we share broadly overlapping common values for what we need our superintendent to do. But I will vote yes to delay.
Ryan?
The job description is based off of the state standards, which is the expectations that the state has set up with the superintendent's performance on there and the qualifications and other guidelines on there. I appreciate the idea with the strategic plan, but I think they're two separate items. And I think. With the strategic plan, but I think they're two separate items and I think we need to decide on one or the other to let the other one drive it. Um. I'm gonna be voting no on it, I'm. I, I don't think we can spend more time studying when we don't know what we're studying and we have a person in the position that should have a. Upstate job description regardless of who it is, and I think, I think they're two completely separate things. I, I recognize the key performance indicators and other things haven't mentioned, but. I, I don't think that we need to delay it anymore. I think this is a adequate job description. Education is a very field as opposed to the private sector as far as. Achievement gaps and other opportunities with that, that there's a lot that plays into it. Um, and this, this matches up with the state standards and I think it's an appropriate job description, so.
Anybody else? Um, I'm gonna vote to delay as well, but I have this, I share your concerns, Brian. And Andrew, I do not think that this, um, job description should be linked to the strategic plan. It needs to be a standalone document that, um, you know, that, that holds up over time. Um, I don't think it should have key performance indicators. Um, I think, I think it outlines what we expect. Um, I was ready to vote yes on it, but I'm gonna, um. I respect that other people need more time and would like to work further on it. Um, it does align to the state standards and that's, um. You know, that is, uh, a pretty good indicator of, of what this position ought to, uh, represent in our district or any district. Um, but it looks like we're gonna delay it and I think a little bit of additional time will benefit all of us. With that, I think we're ready to vote, Kenzie? Lee?
Yes.
Mills?
No.
McCoy?
Yes.
Lyerly?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Gerlach?
Yes.
Crossen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes, um, we're gonna have another go at this next month. And, um. Um, we'll take it up then, so, okay, we're gonna move on, um. Next is. The, uh, under action items, a C revision of. Board of Education policy regarding reading goals. Would someone please read the motion?
I'll move that the revisions to Board of Education policy three forty-one point one, reading goals as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions, discussions? Kenzie? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all voting in favor. All right.
Um, I'll move the repeal of Board of Education rule four forty-three point four. Uh, as presented be approved.
Yeah, we're not on that one.
Oh, I skipped, we did the whole, sorry. I'll move revisions to the Board of Education policies and rules and the three hundred, four hundred series policies as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Kenzie? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Okay, that was D, we're on to E.
I'll move repeal of Board of Education rule four forty-three point four as presented.
Second.
Questions, discussion? Kenzie? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Okay, next is F revisions to COVID nineteen protocol. Someone read the motion, please. Nope, I don't have a motion. Um, so we need to, uh, make a motion. Uh, draft a motion for this one. Does anyone? Um, have any idea of what they would like that to be? Go ahead, Lynn.
I move that, uh, we approve the COVID nineteen motions from the June twenty-sixth board meeting. As presented here. Oh, we're repealing them, okay. I move to repeal these.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we need discussion or questions? I think we discussed it last week, but, um, Brian and then Andrew, okay, all right.
So. One of them essentially was a repeal, so is this motion to repeal the gating criteria for face coverings? Cause the first one was discontinuing the tracing. So it's like, is that what, is that what we're doing? Well, if you repeal the first one, then you would be reinstating. The tracing, because most, the first motion on June twenty-sixth, we did. Two things, we stopped the tracing of close contacts by the district and the quarantining. As per CDC guidelines. And then we put in a motion for what would cause a automatic board meeting if certain gating criteria would be hit. Which was, um, a pretty good motion, but those gating criteria aren't measured anymore. So if. The desire is to not have a, if, if the, if the belief that we don't need a specific. Numeric COVID-based rule right now, uh, it would be to just repeal the, the second one. Because the first one stopped the tracing.
We just submit your motion to repeal the gating criteria for face coverings.
So you would entertain a, a change to the motion?
Yes, please.
So I move that we repeal the gating criteria for face coverings.
Can I get a second?
Except your friendly.
Okay. All right, um, Brian, did you have, did you wanna chime in? No, you're good, all right, anybody else? Kenzie? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you, the next one is also one that doesn't have a motion, um, revision to the clean energy advisory.
I just have a question on F, does that? If, if that's okay, can I ask Andrew a question through the chair?
Sure.
Andrew, does that alleviate then? The, in your opinion, does that alleviate the second part, or do we need to repeal that as well? Or am I confused?
You mean the first part? The, the first part already, there's nothing to repeal in the first motion, cause the first motion discontinued a practice.
Right. Moving on to G revisions to Clean Energy Advisory Committee Charter, um, we need to draft a motion for this one as well. Um, but I think James had something he wanted to, um, offer as far as, uh, amending this, um. Go ahead.
I, I have two motions, uh, motion number one, um. I move to strike the last sentence of the first paragraph under membership. Which establishes that initial membership would be, um, started on one year and two year terms. Uh, I think that the discussion during our working session indicated that until we knew we had a problem with the, the, um. Um, continuation a- and the stability of that membership. That I don't think that that was necessary and maybe complicated the membership renewal process. Um, so I just would say to strike it and let the membership run. Um, for the. And until they decide that they don't want to, um, participate anymore, but. I offer it for discussion.
James, just for clarification, which, um, where was that at to strike which sentence? It's under membership, which is in the first page. Is it the, the one that's underlined?
It is.
Yeah, it's, it's a sentence that's underlined in that first paragraph. Starting with initial membership will be assigned.
I'll second.
All right, do we have any discussion? Anybody, go ahead, Brian? Um, did you? Go ahead.
I, I don't want that stricken because when we originally set up this charter, it kind of avoided having a mass loss of members. And while I appreciate what you're saying of not presenting a problem and tell, uh, and James, I'm sorry if I'm paraphrasing, but the. Avoiding of a problem, I think that was our goal of having that included in there, so, um, I don't support that motion.
Um, Andrew?
If it's initial membership, did the initial membership terms get determined anyways? Some people may have left the committee in the middle of a one or two year term, but like. Any new memberships aren't initial membership anymore. So if someone is in there initially, you're saying if we strike this. You could argue that the initial membership doesn't have the one or the two year attached to it, although.
It does. In the middle of the.
Put your microphone on, Andrew, or I'm sorry, James.
Okay, let me.
I just direct you to like the second sentence of the paragraph. Um, which establishes that with individual membership anticipated to be two years.
Go ahead, uh, go, let Lynn speak, go ahead.
I just have a question, does anyone know whether, um, the initial members have been assigned? A one-year term and a two-year term?
I'm not aware of that.
And I've been to the meetings.
Yeah. I mean, um, it's been less than a year since this was formed and, um, since this charter was done and, um. Uh, already some people have dropped away, students, I mean, the students involved are, you know, they're, they graduate, right? Even, you know, so there's, there's, there'll be, there'll be a fair amount of motion of people in and out of this committee. Um, so anyway. Brian?
When we're looking at initial membership, we're not talking only the initial, my understanding is we're not talking only the original cohort. It's when you come onto that board, your initial membership will be either one or two years at that point. Because that, that's why I'm also looking at that is initial membership will be assigned as a one or two year term with limits distributed amongst it. So someone coming on new to the cohort, that's their initial membership, so you would know you're either on for one year or two years. Which would help go to that, I don't, I'm not reading this as the first group would have it.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Well, I wrote it and this is how I meant it. It was to be the first group of people, the first cohort. Not that that necessarily is right, but that was the intention. The first cohort would be divided into. One-year term and two-year term, so that when the one-year people left, we'd still have some of our original cohort left as new people came on. That was the intent, for better or for worse.
Brian?
And that's great on there, and I think it still meets the same intent with when people coming in. So they also know that, that, you know, that same cycle happens with it, so, um. I don't think there's any harm in regarding it when people come in with the same, same goal with it, so.
I don't know that, uh, that this committee has divided itself into those cohorts or those groups, so they didn't, so. Um, so that, that presents a problem. Um, Brian?
Could be easily decided by the cohort now, I mean, you could say, okay, I was a one-year one and I was a two-year one, cause it doesn't say. When they would be assigned, I mean, should probably tighten that up when they go in, but at this point, it doesn't say when it was supposed to be done.
Okay, so who's the staffer in charge of that? Kale? Yeah, yeah, so in the next, in their next meeting, that should probably be, um. If, if the board agrees that that is a, um, a goal. That they would like to see implemented. It's on, it's in the charter, so.
It's a motion to change that, so we have to vote on the motion to change that before we.
Is there any more discussion about whether or not we want to change it? Go ahead, James.
So if I'm recalling the conversation, um, during the working session correctly. Um, I think our immediate concern was we were already low, right? Um, and we had crossed the threshold where we didn't have the minimum number of, of participants as established in, in the charter. Um, also a part of that conversation was the current members were. Uh, people in the perfect, people that have, um, demonstrated a long-term interest, um, i- in this. So in, in the paragraph above, we establish that these are anticipated to be two-year terms. Um, I, I just don't understand why we would, um, act to stagger them. Oh, I, I recognize the initial, um, uh, proposition and why it was there, but now that we have feedback. Um, from, um, the, uh, uh, the board, I. Um, I don't know that it's, uh, meaningful, um, at this point, but I, I recognize if, um, if we go forward. It's, it was just, uh, something that I was hoping would, um, allow for more stable, um, membership. But if we are afraid, afraid that at two years, we will have a, um, people not opt to renew, which is. Um, a key component of this membership paragraph where, um, they absolutely can volunteer to do consecutive terms. We're not, we're not going to, you know, kick people off if they want to continue, um, they can volunteer for next terms. Um, I just didn't know that it was meaningful.
If we have, um, one and two-year terms, um. And say someone who's, who has served out their term. But wants to continue to serve, is the board going to, um, vote on their reappointment? I mean, this, the city does that, so, and, you know, to keep the reappointments kind of on a schedule. Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
Just wanna be clear, James, I think what you're saying then is that we would hope that the, the people. Of the original cohort who have, who are still remaining will serve a two-year term. And that when new people come on, they will serve a two-year term, because that's the expectation. That everyone will serve a two-year term and they may volunteer to serve another two-year term, is that what you're saying?
You're correct, right? What I, we're saying is I think our initial observation is. We're probably going to trigger our membership recruitment annually anyways because of a minimum threshold, right? And so the, 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 um, the concern around one year versus two year, I think we're gonna be looking for membership. Probably annually anyways, so I just didn't know if this was a meaningful structure. Um, a- and would it, you know, push people? Through, it doesn't, we're silent on how many consecutive terms you can serve, so I, I think we're established as. If they are doing a good job and the board continues to approve their consecutive terms, they remain a member. Um, but ultimately, um, just I looked at the, the conversation from last time and offered a motion.
Okay, can you repeat your motion, please? I'll read what I have. Okay. To strike the last sentence under membership on the first page.
First paragraph of membership, because there's two paragraphs.
First paragraph on the first page? Any further discussion, Lynn?
And after all the discussion, I would support that.
Anybody else? Okay, I think we're ready to vote on that.
Online voting is now open.
My voting isn't coming up. Kinsey, do you want to voice vote?
Yeah, I'll, I'll support it. I'm a yes.
The votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Lyerly, yes. Mills, no. Gerlach, yes. Crossen, yes. Lee, yes.
Okay. You had another one. Go ahead.
I move to add the following sentences to the end of the second paragraph under membership. And Kinsey, I've shared this document so that you don't have to remember, and you can just pull it. So after, basically at the end of the membership section, membership recruitment will occur once per year at a time coordinated with the district administration by the non-voting staff member on the committee. Committee membership less than the designated minimum number of individuals will not trigger an immediate membership recruitment unless determined necessary by the superintendent of schools and learning.
Second.
This motion is simply to establish that at the, any time if someone resigns from the committee, that we will not feel the urge to have to immediately address a shortage of membership, and that we establish a schedule that will be coordinated with the district, unless we lose five people and the superintendent says we need to replenish the, the committee.
Okay. Brian.
James, would you be willing to add, or board president?
I accept your friendly.
Okay. Let's give Kinsey a moment. Can you repeat that, Brian? What, what did you want to add?
Requested by a superintendent or board president.
Just add it to the end of the, the last sentence.
All right. Does anyone need that read out before they vote? All right.
Laura.
Yes, go ahead.
I think that's a good idea, if you could read out.
Okay.
Before we vote. Thank you.
Okay, the motion is to add the following sentences to the end of the second paragraph under membership. Membership recruitment will occur once per year at a time coordinated with the district administration by the non-voting staff member on the committee. Committee membership less than the designated minimum number of individuals will not trigger an immediate membership recruitment unless determined necessary by the superintendent of schools and learning or board president.
Okay, okay. All right, anybody else? I think we're ready to vote, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open.
Kinsey, I don't know why my voting went away. Oh, there you go. Thank you. I can't believe I'm just figuring that out. So anyway, thank you.
Were you able to vote, Laura?
Yes, there we go. It should be. Very good.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, so this charter will now reflect those changes. Do we have to bring this back to vote in its amended? Okay, then we're good. Go ahead, Brian.
As we're looking at this membership part, I just want to stress that there's some keywords in there and some keywords omitted, and I'm very pleased with how it's written. When we look at with membership of no fewer than 10 and no more than 15 individuals, that's fine. And at least two students shall be included in this membership. So the at least does not mean that there's only two. So if we have students that are interested, and we get three, or four, or five, or 10 of them that are interested, now I do, I think that this, well, it's clear that it allows it. I think it's probably the most beneficial part of this charter. And also, there's nothing saying that it's high school students. So if we have middle school students that are interested in participating in this and they apply, I think they deserve full consideration as well. And if they have elementary school students that are interested in this and apply, I think they have full consideration as well with it. So while the application date's coming up October 1st, and it is now September 23rd, and I'm sure that there's a bunch of middle school students listening to a school board meeting, I would encourage anyone that's interested in applying so we can get those numbers up. And if it's 10 students of our school district that are interested in it, let's do it.
I would concur with that. I would love to see more kids. We have a couple of student participates, participants, and they're fantastic. So, oh, Lynn Geller.
And I would like to add to that. I have a slightly different perspective. I've seen a number of advisory committees created since my, since I started on the board, and this is the one that I have seen that people have joined because they have expertise in the area. And I think this is a, this is a scientific and legal endeavor, and I think it's so serious and so important, that it's really, really important that we continue to encourage people, professionals with expertise in the area of energy and conservation, et cetera, to be part of it, not just students who are interested.
Okay, anybody else? Andrew.
I'm sure the, I'm sure the majority of the committee will be people with, people with expertise, and I don't, I don't think it's likely that there will be a need to have five or six students out of 10 or 15, or have three students apply to be, three more students apply just to get there to be, to be 10. But I think there's, I think there's room for both. And if, if we have a situation where student, student members are sticking around and community professionals, career professionals are leaving, then it might, it might just tip it a little bit one way. That said, I don't think there's ever, it's ever going to be made up of all students or anything like that.
Right.
I was speaking with a student at an athletic activity last week, and their family, whose family is very vested in this, through the student is very vested in this, and the student was disappointed they weren't selected last time. So I encouraged that student to reapply for it. I think the environmental and scientific knowledge of the students is there, and that we're succeeding in that. And like I said, I agree, I agree, Lynn, we want the experts on there, but we also have students who are very passionate and maybe experts as well on it, so.
I like very much the idea that these, these experts might act as mentors to these students as well. The, the two students we have right now clearly have a huge interest and are very, can hold their own in that room, which is very nice. So, okay, anybody else? All right, then let's move on. We're going to move on to approval of board norms. This one also does not have a motion. Would anyone like to create one? James?
I move that the board norms as presented be approved.
I will second that.
So I, I opened with a motion because I think we need that for discussion. So open the floor.
Go ahead, Rick.
This, the answer to this question will depend on how I vote for this. Are we to consider norms something short of policy yet binding? Or are norms to be considered generally accepted, non-binding? And by binding, I mean, if, if violated, would there be consequences taken for violation of these norms? And I don't know that we answered that question. I would like to get a position on that.
I don't think there can be, they're not binding. I think they're, I, I think they're, and I don't know that any action could be taken if someone breaks one of these. There, I think there are guidance and expectations and, and I hope board members, if we pass, will adhere to them. That's kind of my take on it. If anyone else would like to chime in here. Andrew, and then James.
Yeah, this is, this is different from our, our last board norms, which I think was a carefully, carefully reached compromise that managed to include multiple perspectives. This is basically, basically driven by WASB. I think WASB does some very, very phenomenal work around legislative advocacy for education. They also have a governance philosophy, which is a hands-off philosophy, which is a perspective on how to, how to do school board governance, and that just is, it's woven into this too, too much for me to be able to vote yes. I, I do, I do go through the, I do go through the superintendent because we have a very good one right now. If we had one that wasn't very good and I had to use other, other methods as an elected official to represent my constituents, then I would do that. You know, I think that, I think the cell phone thing is a little, is, is a little paternalistic, as is number, the non-verbal gestures and, you know, negative or affirmative. You know, if, if number 10 said we will address processes, not personalities, and that was it, I'd be fine with it, but I'm not going to spend time amending it either. I'm just going to, I'm just going to vote no. It's, I'm not opposed in principle to just about anything on here, but no, not number four, number four being present enough is enough for me to vote no, because it is codifying even lightly the hands-off model, which that's not what I'm about, so.
Anybody else? Brian.
I agree with what Andrew's saying on some of the stuff. I'm going to support it because overall, I would expect that we treat each other like professionals and meet these, and if you're not, then you're not. So, you know, there's an opportunity for the, the voters and just the natural process, the meeting to take place. I think we've got a lot of issues on there, you know, as a board that we need to address, treat each other like professionals and recognize that. And there's nothing binding on this anyways, so hopefully we all agree to treat each other like professionals.
James, did you want to? No, okay. Okay, then I'll, I'll wrap this up if no one else has anything else to say. So this, this is actually a pretty easy vote for me. I think this sort of vote sends a signal out into our community that we hold ourselves accountable. And the, the main, the main one that really, the one that sticks out for me is number seven, under, during board meetings, that we model behaviors, the board expects of students, staff, and community members. That's a really important thing to, to show our community. And, and I think this shows that we hold ourselves to those standards and that we should, we should be able to govern ourselves. And this, this is a commitment to that. So I'm going to vote yes. Go ahead, Andrew.
So my, my no vote on this, again, is about largely to do with part one, number four, which is codifying a hands-off governance model in, in writing, even if it's non-binding. My no vote is not about treating people unprofessionally. As far as modeling the behaviors the board expects, I would, I would agree, but sometimes maybe the board expects the student or the students or the community to have to have, to have to fight a little bit, to have to get a little bit passionate about something, and that would be okay, too. For anyone who says we really need this, I would encourage anyone to choose the, whatever you would think is the most outrageous, crazy board meeting we've had in the last 10 years, and then go pick, go pick some smaller school districts at, at random, and just watch those meetings side by side and come back and tell me what you think. I, I might be wrong, but I'm, I'm probably not.
Okay, anybody else want to chime in? Cool, go ahead.
First of all, I really think that the, the intent behind the norms is outstanding, and I applaud that. But I think there are some things in here that's a little bit murky, a little bit watered down. And, and also the idea that, you know, we are elected officials, we're, we're, we're supposed to have these norms. We're supposed to understand the roles and responsibility of what we're supposed to do. That's why we ran for these offices. And I, I think that these are nice guiding principles, but again, I, I think we, we come short in some areas here. And, and I honestly would say that I would not have any issue respecting my colleagues, my peers, and that I would have no issue being very professional about it. And I, I would, I'm on the fence for voting yes on this, too.
Well, we did, we did all discuss these in our retreat. We went through them one by one, and, and we had a chance, and some things did, if I remember correctly, did get removed. There was some editing that went into the original document, what I want to say was much lengthier. And I, so we've had it, we've had a chance to, to kind of air some of our, our problems, and this is where we are now. So I'm, I'm ready to vote on this. I don't know how everyone else feels, but Brian?
This is a procedural issue. I mean, if people want to amend it, they can do it right now as well, so.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Lee, no. Crossen, yes. Gerlach, yes. Mills, yes. Lyerly, yes. McCoy, yes. Becker, no.
Okay. The motion carries, and that is the, that completes our agenda for the night. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? I opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.